All in favor of vote, we stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number two is appointments, the planning commission on the 10th district. We've had a recent resignation from Christie Sullivan. She served that well. But this is her term ends in January 26th. So to fill the remainder of that term, Ms. Amanda Berry has come forward. That's with Commissioner Danny Williams. I've known Amanda for 30 plus years now and she's fine community involvement involved in real estate and does a good job with that. So Commissioner Williams, is that your motion tonight to have her put on? That's by Commissioner, have a second. Second by Commissioner Spicer. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote, we stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next is inmate disciplinary review board. This is something that's supposed to be set up for two-year terms, but I think we're a little behind on this. But the sheriff called that and he has six names that he would like to bring forward. Then make just for review board. I think that's simply what it is. Is there any other description you'd like to give to that?
Review board, we have rules and regulations and a formal disciplinary board that's set up to. If there's a jail infraction, a rule break, then we have to have these folks on there. Typically, one person does most of them. But that person's not able to sit in or feel like there's a conflict of interest. They have another person do it. And then ultimately, if they don't like the outcome, then it can be appealed up. That's why myself or the chief deputy doesn't need to be on that, on this board. But it's a formality that requires y'all to, to look at these folks. Do they have, they have the names?
Yes, I have the names here. I don't think y'all have the names. We'll get those to you. But on this list, we proceed this afternoon. It's Chief Jailer Hayes, Captain Cave, Sergeant Collins, Sergeant Whitworth, Deputy Webster and Lieutenant Barber. Is those correct names, Sheriff? These, your vote tonight is to carry this on to the regular session in two weeks and one day to be voted on. Motion by Commissioner Buckner to have a second. Second by Commissioner Simpkins. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote, we stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next item is elections. This is agriculture extension committee. By law, this is called an election versus appointment on this. Commissioner Simpkins, do you want to carry this?
Yes, we've had one to go off. He's served his term, Todd Berry. And another one had requested to come off. He had two more years, but his mother's getting in bad health and he needs to be there with her. The names we're going to bring forward is Stefan Logan and Jeff Keegan. They will be up for six, six years and they'll be reelected every two, I think. I think I'm right on that. Yes. And that's who we got on there to bring forward.
And all this, you have reapportment showing for Connie Hurd, Dwight McElwain and Mike Petty?
Yes.
Okay. Is those the same like terms on that?
Yes.
All right. You heard the election from the, the report from the committee on that. Open floor for motion. Motion by Commissioner Spicer, second by Commissioner Buckner. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote, we stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Next item is committee reports. Any committees report? I think we got everyone on that. Next item is new business quarterly financial reports, all funds except schools, Mr. Hall.
These quarterly reports cover the period ending December 31st, 2024. Just going through them myself, we'll start with general fund 101. The revenues look good on these, these funds or this fund here especially. The expenditures kind of have been a theoretical 50% of the year. If you see the end of the expenditures, it shows higher than that. It's around 65% if I remember. But the main thing I'll throw in there is we don't have a budgeted line item for the help center, which can't, we spent $115,000 on the help center for endowment. And we didn't get budgeted for the U-Bank property, which is 6.2 million. So that skewed it over the 50% right there, those two items themselves. So if you, if you took those away, we'd be right there around that 50% mark. So that I would throw that in on those. Otherwise, there are some smaller items that are over 50%, but I think they're going to be okay. My glasses won't cooperate here. No, no, they just won't stay on my head like I want them. But otherwise, in the general fund, I think everything looks pretty good. There's, there's some items I'm going to continue to watch. 116, the revenues look good in the 116 landfill sanitation fund. We have some projects going on there that's over, that's skewing that 50% theoretical number also. But we'll have some funds or some funds to offset those projects that are throwing that 50% number over too. So by the time we come back the next reporting period, the third quarter, that we should have that under control. We have some monies that will take care of those projects that are being run through the sanitation fund. So. But the revenues look good there. There are just some projects that are skewing that 50% mark. So I don't feel like there's any problem here right now either. It should be taken care of by the time the third quarter reports come in. 122 fund, the sanitation fund is 116 if you're trying to take notes or anything. Drug control fund 122. There's not much activity going on there. That's where they make bust out on interstate confiscations and that type thing. There's just not much money there. If there's not money there, they can't spend the money. So that's, there's not much happening in that fund. 131 highway fund, their revenues look really good also. Their expenditures are good all over the place. Utilities are out of line. We've moved to a bigger site from the smaller site in Dixon. They've moved to Charlotte. Their expenditures, water, utilities and everything are exceeding the budget because we didn't know where it was going. But we'll wait till the third quarter and then we'll really see where we'll be going for the new budget. We'll start getting into budget process. But yeah, that and there, we kind of knew that was going to happen to start with, but we are in a much better. Offices and shop buildings and that type thing. It's not exceedingly awful or anything, but it is over. That's the only thing I could come up with there. Everything else looked good.
Any question, Mr. Hall?
Well, I've still got a couple more funds somewhere. I kind of made it sound like I was done. I'm sorry. Debt service fund 151, revenues are great there also. Expenditures are good and they're really low. But we always budget for the payments of debt and our principal and interest toward the end of the year. So those payments, there's some small payments coming through early in the year, but they bet, we budget those big payments toward the end of the year. That way property tax comes in, we have the money for it. And 171 capital projects looks good. Community development 172 fund. Revenues again and expenditures both look good. I have nothing else to add to all those funds. There are seven funds that we oversee right now. But if you have any questions, just give me a call or email. Ms. Gray.
Any questions for Mr. Hall at this point? Open floor for motion, move this on to regular session. Motion by Commissioner McElwain, second by Commissioner Petty. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote, we stating aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is all funds to set up school budget amendments. Mr. Hall has no budget amendments tonight. Item number three is quarterly financial reports, all school funds, Board of Education representatives with an S. I'm Sandra Hill.
Hello. So with our quarterly reports, we only have four, so not here as many as Mr. Hall. We have the 141 fund, which is the general purpose school fund. And as you can see at the end of the second quarter, so ending December 31st, we were at about 50% of budgeted revenues. And 40% of budgeted expenditures at the end of December. For 142, that's our federal school funds. So that's in and out. You know, we spend the money and the federal government reimburses us. Then we have the 143 fund. That's the central cafeteria fund. For revenues, they're only at about 38%, but they're, the way that the US government reimburses them is about a month or two behind. So that's why that looks a little skewed, but they are at about 51% of expenditures. And then the 177 fund, that's the one with the 15 million that you all approved. And as you can see, we have used about 42% as of December 31st.
Any question, Ms. Underhill? This is a vote cannot move this on to regular session. Motion by Commissioner Grove to have second. Second by Commissioner Ledger. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote, we stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number four is budget amendment, school funds 141, 42. Ms. Underhill.
Okay. So these are the same ones that we brought to you last month. I did create one extra summary sheet that just breaks it down by account code. That way it's plainly stated. You could see we're asking for a revenue increase of 1.2 million and an expenditure increase of 1.7 million, which is a net change in fund balance of about 456,000. At the end of our, our audit report that came out, our fund balance was at about 32 million. So if these were approved and we did spend them all and receive the budgeted revenues, we would still have about 27 million in our fund balance.
Want to point out on the audit, one of the things that caused me question and concern when we had discussion last time. We wanted to wait, I wanted to wait to get the whole number so I'd have a better understanding of it. Is you know, we budget into a negative with schools every year because of the maintenance of effort works and how we do this. The, so they budgeted in $5 million into the negative, but that's an artificial number because maintenance of efforts lower than true revenues. Well, the true revenues came in and that's where the fund balance ended up at 32 million. But I believe to walk along with Ms. Underhill said, we budgeted in the whole five million. So the net effect is on this, the 32 million is correct for the end of the year. But if we were putting that in today's budget, they would have an unaoledged fund balance of 27 million. So still well above any figure that above safety figure. They're about, in my opinion, I know the schools may feel different, but they're about twice as much as I think they need in fund balance. They probably don't need any more than 12 and a half, 13 million dollars in there, but they have on paper 27 million using this year's budget. So I'm trying to be as conservative as possible. They finish year 32 million with them going a whole five million, 27 million. But historically, they're going to end up having more than that at the end of this fiscal year. So I probably made that as clear as mud, but 27 million dollars is the fund balance in Bob's head. You pick your own number.
What about the 15 million? Was that in this year's budget?
That was last year. So we still had 32 million in our fund balance after the 15 million. Yes, sir.
Still have 32?
And I will say, we do have some roofing projects coming up that are not included in these amendments because we don't have those estimates yet. So we will probably be coming back with a few minor amendments.
Commissioner Bailey?
Like I said, I'm, I guess when this was first given to us a month ago or sometime, I was a little confused, still kind of confused. You know, it was 450, I heard 80, I heard 300, I've heard everything. What is the, on these amendments, the 450,000 amendments? What's the biggest majority of that? I mean, is it, is it insurance? Is it, you know, I looked through a few of them, but what are some of the? Or is it just pretty much, I know you said you were cleaning up some lines and, but I just wondered what we, what we got for that 450?
Well, our special ed population has required additional ancillaries this year. So that's been one of the hits that we've had, just people moving out of state and they require a full-time ancillary. So that's an educational assistant. And then we also have had, a lot of it was, like you said, cleanups move up for grants like the ISM, the innovative school model CTE grant. So that was just kind of moving within major account categories. But we also had had, I don't know if y'all remember, but a few years ago, we had an anonymous donor give us quite a lump sum of money. And so there was money left in that, but it was in our restricted fund balance. And so we requested to move 700 of that back from there because it wasn't included in our budget. So that we would be able to spend that on instructional supplies and materials for what it was intended for. And then, so that's, that's a big chunk there.
I think any legislative body, your concern about using fund balance is use of recurring expenses. And I think the comfort level that I have in this commission historically had And I think the comfort level that I have in this commission historically had is using fund balance to buy property, build buildings, things of that type, things that don't recur. So again, I, I do want to get some more understanding between now and two weeks from now on what, I need to, like Commissioner Beatty said, I need a better understanding of where we're headed because when we start spending out of the savings account for recurring costs, it's going to hit a wall one day. So, and again, a conversation we probably need to have sooner than later and maybe with your board as total about the long term plans y'all are looking at because there's money that we're in a position to borrow without raising taxes right now. And I think we've talked several times over the years about getting a universal view. And I read some things that were in the, on the internet or wherever I read things that y'all did the other night and they all, they all sounded good. But again, we've, the money's still sitting there to borrow, but if you borrow money and use it on a twenty year amortization, we need to be spending the money on items that have twenty years worth of life. You know, like building a new building or improving an old building or things of that type. So I'd like to sit down with y'all one more time so we can go over that so I can have more clarity. But I'm sorry, I didn't mean to ask all the questions. Y'all have any other questions on this? The ask will be on this motion is to move this on to the regular meeting, but I'd like to meet with them in the meantime. And if y'all have any other questions, love to hear them from y'all also.
So are you comfortable making a motion to move it and giving you two weeks or do you need more time?
No, I think we can get it clarified in two weeks.
I'll make the motion, move it to the regular meeting then.
Make Commissioner Grove to have a second. Second by Commissioner Williams. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank y'all. Appreciate y'all being here tonight. Next time, biz speed limit, Eno Road, Commissioner Ledger.
Yes, we got a couple complaints for that road and Sheriff Tim Aides has made a study of it and we'll hear what he's got to think.
All right, thank you. We conducted a study, not, not the entire length, but the area of the primary complaints, I think it was around near the community center. We ran an eight day study back at first of December. Total number of vehicles started, studied was three thousand six hundred and fifty nine vehicles. The speed limit's currently forty five miles an hour. Out of that, exceeding the forty five miles an hour were a hundred and forty eight speeders, which is not a lot of speeders. But when you get down, y'all, you know, I'm fixing to say the eighty fifth percentile is what I usually focus on. And looking at that in one direction, thirty seven in the other, thirty nine with the average, average speeds of thirty three and thirty three. Given that information, we're closer to a thirty five mile an hour speed limit with the eighty fifth percentile being just a couple miles an hour higher than that. I think you would be okay with that. I have not run any crash data through there, but just off the cuff, I don't think we have, have had a lot of accidents or crashes there. So I think you'd be fine with a thirty five mile an hour speed limit because the vast majority of them are going to be in that, in that zone anyway. But that does lower the threshold, so that would be my recommendation.
Commissioner Ledger, is that your motion? Thank you. Thirty, set it for thirty five miles an hour. Sir, second. Second by Commissioner Spicer. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. We can set a special speed limit for you. Other business, any other business commissioners? Would like to make one quick comment, kind of update you on something we've been working on probably for, I don't know, it doesn't really matter how long we've worked on it. I could let my parents tell the story. It was important when it started, doesn't matter. We've been working on for a while, along with the city of Dixon, our state legislators. We have a issue with, I don't think the right term, but I want to call them halfway houses, reentry houses in the community that are being built inside and outside the city. I know Commissioner Williams has a, has had an issue with one over there. We're doing our due diligence. There's a lot of things that the state will not allow counties and cities to do because it's on him, because of fair housing and things of that type. We've asked help from our state legislators about looking at some things on this. We all know the necessity of people that go through drug rehab and need a way out, need a, need an exit plan, and I appreciate that. But at the same time, it's starting to appear in this community, and I'm hearing from other mayors and other counties, that it's starting like an unregulated industry where if you see folks, there's packs of guys walking around all the time. You have to be careful on Highway forty eight, driving home tonight, wearing dark clothing. You know, people don't do what we used to do, wear white and face traffic anymore. So it's a little bit disturbing. But you know, you go to a lot of places and it's, it's just unusual to have a lot of mid, young, mid age males sitting around like Saturday at the Thunder Alley, when you're there with your five year old grandson and these guys show up. And again, you know, I know I'm out here on thin ice talking like that, but it's, it's becoming an issue. And with some of our, along with some of our folks that help in this community, that help folks like the help center, when they're in a position where they like to reach out and help people, but when these people apparently are getting spun out of these homes, they have nowhere to go and no, and nothing to do and they need help. And so it's starting to put stress on the very charities that we help individually and to the county government. So I just want to get that out there. I think most of the people that are involved in this industry is well meaning, but there's a fallout about having this dropped in your community and what we have to do for social service, what we have to do for law enforcement. And I think it's a real question. So my ask from you, y'all, is that I'd like to get your input on this because we're due to meet again with our state legislators in the next thirty days about it, trying to get some kind of bill that's fair to the industry of this, but also fair to the community that's here catching the whatever's going on after the fact. So just want to get that out there. Please holler, reach out to me if you have any input on it. I'd love to hear from you. Yes, sir.
Comments or discussions, we're met with, well, we're, we're regulated by the state. We're approved by the state.
And that is absolutely true, but to go back to my statement, it's almost like an unregulated industry. And again, you don't want to, I've got analogies out there, but when I use the analogies, I'm talking about human beings that they're taking care of. But it would be very similar to something that with the undocumented illegal alien problem, that they are being dropped in these communities and citizen taxpayers, Dixon County are having to take care of them. And is that right? I don't know. Again, you, you want these people to go through rehab and get their, get their feet back under them. But the regulation of how it's done seems to be pretty loose at this point. So I don't think there is one, but they're using a lot of the fair housing deals about how many people you can put in a home, how many people you have in a bedroom and.
Transitional housing.
Right.
When, in Judge Birch's, you know, court, when it was first started, they were just popping up everywhere.
Right.
I mean, everywhere. And so the city of Dixon did create the term, you know, transitional housing and it can only be in certain zoning, you know, areas of the city and so forth. So, but that's kind of hard to do out in the county. I mean,
It is.
Because it's free range, you know, they, they can go anywhere. So.
And that's why we want to have discussion now. So appreciate all of your input. If you're having an issue in your, your districts especially, or just in general in commercial areas, please, please reach out, reach out to me and let me know because we're, we're putting together something pretty good to work with and it's a unified front along with the city of Dixon because they, they seem to have most of the problem, but our problems aren't the same for the very reasons you just mentioned, what cities can do and what counties can do are somewhat different.
I'd go downtown and I was coming back in front of the, the meat, the steak place down on Mulberry, Riley's. And there were probably seventy young adults outside the Presbyterian Church building back. Is that an AA group or is it? Okay. Well, okay, I have seen them back there a couple of times. It was just a big group down there tonight. I mean, they were, you know, wasn't nothing wrong. I said, what, they all weren't down there buying steak. So it was, I didn't know what was going on. So, okay.
And most of these residents out of state to come to these?
I'm sorry.
Out of state that come to these?
They're not, they're not all local. We understand that. So I don't know.
We used to get a lot of them at the hospital and they would be out of state.
Aren't they assigned through court? I mean, didn't the judge tell them that they get like a builder builds a triplex or, or a four apartment like a prim white blood? See, that, that place stays full all time, people walking up down the road all the time. Didn't the judge actually send them in there or they, the individual that built the, the deal? I mean, is he, is he responsible for it?
This is a kind of, most of these are like individual deals. No, we have some of the nicer ones that we're all aware of that are the group camps or the bigger, you know, like Dreward and the one out on Spencer Mill and those that are managed a little differently with staff on site. There's not necessarily staff on site, but these popping up in the neighborhoods. I think they, my understanding, they have assigned a monitor, but it's not like there's somebody sitting there riding, riding herd over it daily. So it's, it's an issue we've got to get our arms around before it gets completely out of control.
Try to get that place from white blood, you know, approved for that, of course, the city didn't stand for it. So, but then they went out the road out there and built one and they, I guess, I don't know how many is in there, but there's quite a few. And they walk right upside the road and if you don't watch, you run over one of them, you know?
Classes they go to or they just wander around or?
A lot of them.
Van loads of them just hauling them around here, yawning about and.
Many of them are out getting jobs, attempting to get jobs. So, but again, with their, some of them, again, I'm off on a tangent here, but their resume, it's kind of hard to get a job. So whenever they had the food giveaway at the help center in front of the YMCA and the government building, that a lot of folks come out of the woods to be served and they had to turn, start turning those folks away. And they appeared to be people that were, that had been in those programs, but their insurance money ran out and they're out on their own now.
I've, I've seen, seen and witnessed several of them with BBT cards, buying groceries and stuff like that. You know, I guess they're, they just apply just like anybody else and, and get those cards. They go to the grocery store and buy whatever, that that card will permit them to buy. And that's most anything now. They're not really limited as to what they can buy with them, what I understand. So.
Well, if y'all just look out in the community and, you know, holler back at me if you've got some input, we'd love to get it and kind of, kind of put all of our thoughts together and so we can continue to research on it. But you know, we want to do something that, that to help, we want to help anybody. That's part of what government does. But the most important thing we do is keep our community safe and we need to make sure we're doing that first and foremost. So didn't mean to get off on a tangent tonight, but appreciate your help on that.
Can I ask a question real quick? Counsel, what is going on with the House Bill three oh one? Because there is something that's been introduced to kind of give counties a little more control when it comes to zoning. Has that been pushed through anymore yet or?
So, and that's in part, I think, what the mayor's talking about is taking a comprehensive look at this, including that bill that's been introduced. So, yeah, I don't think it's moved forward from where the, where it was when it was filed.
There's caption bills out there and all those can still be massaged. We're familiar with that, but there's other work being done outside of that. Any other questions? Any other, other business? Hearing none. Any announcements? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Birthday and y'all don't have to sing.
Look forward to it. Are we celebrating in a special way? Okay.
Bringing cows.
That's weird. Okay. Well, happy birthday. And we still get opportunities to get Commissioner Grove here in a couple of weeks, I believe. So. We, we got you there. Any other, other announcements? Hearing none. The last announcement be the next work session meeting will be on March third, two thousand twenty five at seven PM with the Beaufort Dale Biddy Reed Junior, County Commission Chamber, the Dixon County Administration Building, Four Court Square.